Good evening, everybody. This is the Commissioner meeting of December 28th, 2022 at 6:00 PM here at the Sussex County Administrative Center at the Commissioner Meeting Room in One Spring Street in Newton, New Jersey. I'd like to call this meeting to order and ask Christina to please call the roll.
Deputy Director Carney?
Here.
Commissioner Fantasia?
Here.
Director Fasano?
Here.
Commissioner Space is absent. Commissioner Yardley?
Here. Thank you. I'd like to ask if you can please rise with us for a moment of silence and a salute to the flag today on National Pledge of Allegiance Day. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Pursuant to the Open Public Meetings Act, Chapter 231 PL 1975, adequate notice as defined by Section 3D of Chapter 231 PL 1975 has been made by regular mail and email. Such notice was submitted on January 7th, 2022, from the Administrative Center of the County of Sussex, located at One Spring Street in Newton, New Jersey, to the following: The New Jersey Herald, The Star-Ledger, WSUS Radio, and WNNJ Radio, and is also posted on the bulletin board maintained in the Administrative Center for public announcements and has been submitted to the Sussex County Clerk in compliance with said act. At this time, we'd like to remind you to please mute all electronic devices. Item five on our agenda is the approval of our agenda. Do we have a motion to approve the agenda this evening?
Still move.
Commissioner Carney moves. Is there a second?
Second.
Commissioner Fantasia seconds. Any discussion? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Standing? Motion carries. Item six, we have no proclamation certificates or presentations tonight. We also have no public hearings for item seven, which brings us to item eight, which is our first public session from the floor. This public session is for those wishing to make a comment of three minutes or less regarding an agenda item. Please line up at the microphone and maintain six feet social distance with other attendees and state your name, municipality, and the agenda topic for the record. Is there a motion to open the floor for public comment this evening? Commissioner Carney moves. Is there a second?
Second.
Commissioner Fantasia seconds. Any discussion? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Standing? Motion carries, and the floor is now open for our first public comment of the evening regarding agenda items. Is there anyone who wishes to be heard? Hearing none, is there a motion to close the floor for public comment this evening?
Still move.
Commissioner Carney moves. Is there a second?
Second.
Commissioner Fantasia seconds. Any discussion? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Standing? Motion carries. Item nine brings us to Commissioner comments. I understand Commissioner Space has a comment that will be read by Deputy Director Carney, so we will still start to my left with Deputy Director Carney on behalf of Commissioner Space.
Thank you, Director. Jill, sorry she can't be here, but I'll be reading her report, as Anthony said. Hello, everyone. Sorry, I am unable to attend tonight's meeting as I am out of town celebrating related Christmas with my daughters and parents who cannot make it to New Jersey this year. I would like to start by saying what an honor it has been to fill out three minutes of Sylvia Patillo's term over the last eight months. This is such a hard-working board, and I'm proud to be a part of it. Sorry. We have accomplished many great things in 2022, one being the hiring of our new county administrator, Ron Tappan. Ron brings many years of institutional knowledge to the board as he has served numerous years shared services for the county, including his experience in administrative of PACON. I feel we made the right decision. At least that's why.
I bet you.
It was a priority of the board to accomplish many great things with funds from the American Rescue Plan, funds their county received. We all felt one of the most important uses was towards premium pay for our hard-working county employees who worked throughout the COVID pandemic. Also, we rolled out the small business grants, which would be very beneficial to our county. We set out many plans and works for next year with the remainder. I have thoroughly enjoyed being liaisoned to many different things. As liaison to Health and Human Services and the Sussex, Moores, Warren Workforce Development Board, I was able to participate alongside the county in its role of moving the patients to better facilities and seeing the staff there get help with job placement. Commissioner Fasano, thank you for the great job in leading this board throughout 2022. Although I have only served for eight months, I had the pleasure of calling you a friend for the last 10 years. You have shown strong leadership skills, both here at the county and also in your hometown of PACON. So proud of you for being the youngest Commissioner Director in the state. I look forward to seeing many more great opportunities and accomplishments for you, my friend. Lastly, I look forward to starting a full term in January. We will continue to work hard as a board, looking out for all our county employees and the residents of Sussex County. Happy New Year. Jill Space.
Thank you, Commissioner Carney, and thank you, Commissioner Space, for that. Commissioner Fantasia?
Thank you. Tonight, I have some updates from the Health Department. If you recall, at our last meeting, I had a very, very, very long-winded report with many requests. So tonight, actually, one of the requests that was met quite nicely is some updates from the Health Department regarding influenza and RSV because we were seeing some troubling numbers and trends coming out that were affecting our youngest residents, particularly infants in the state with the RSV. So to begin, just as a reminder, the Division of Health is offering COVID-19 vaccinations, the primary series and boosters, and appointments are not required at the Office of Public Health Nursing. That's 201 Wheatsworth Road in Hamburg, Wednesday, January 11th, 2023, from 2:00 to 4:00, and Wednesday, January 25th, from 3:00 to 5:00. You can complete a consent form in advance at sussex nj.us, and public health nursing continues to provide weekly homebound vaccinations. We also continue to have the free at-home COVID-19 test kits. Visit our website. This is done through Vault Medical Services, sussex nj.us. So again, we are in yellow as per the New Jersey Department of Health as far as COVID variants are reporting nearly 95% Omicron. County's been reporting an average of roughly 35 cases daily. Hospitalizations in December, 39; November, 42; October was at 82. So you can see, we're still at a pretty good trend with those October numbers, about cut in half now for a couple consecutive months. But now, moving on to the flu and respiratory illnesses. Sussex County is at a high level activity for flu, which is consistent across the entire state. The same time last year, Sussex County was at a moderate level, and two years ago, 2020, it was curiously at a low activity level, quite inexplicably, but I will not pontificate from my seat as to where I believe the influenza virus went. Emergency room visits related to influenza-like activity are lower than last week and compared to the same timeframe last year, but school absenteeism rates are higher compared to previous years in Sussex County. There are two confirmed influenza pediatric deaths, and 39 severe pediatric cases of influenza this season, and that's in the state of New Jersey. And outbreaks of flu and RSV continue to be reported in all settings throughout the state, and flu outbreaks in long-term care facilities are at a much higher rate compared to previous years. The circulating strains are influenza A, subtype H3N2, and H1N1. And the promising news is if you did receive an influenza vaccine, those two strains were covered in the vaccine this year, so fingers crossed for all that it is effective in helping you thwart that illness. Now, as far as influenza activity in Sussex County, as of December 20th, the school absenteeism rate that I referred to, Sussex County is at the highest rate in the state, at 12.63 is our absenteeism rate that is related to influenza illness. Emergency room visits, however, related to influenza illness, Sussex is about in the middle of the pack. We are at 6.67%. The highest is Salem County at 12%, and the lowest is Hunterdon County at 2.74%. It's about smack in the middle for hospitalizations, but it is hitting our younger population harder. There are six RSV outbreaks in schools and daycares in Sussex County, but there's no RSV in long-term care facilities right now, which is good news, but it does tend to be a more pediatric illness. There are four influenza A outbreaks in schools, four COVID outbreaks in schools, five COVID outbreaks in long-term care facilities, and one COVID outbreak in an acute care facility. And when they say outbreak, it can directly be traced to multiple cases where it is being spread within that facility, not multiple people coming to that facility who are already infected. So I'd like to continue to get these numbers specifically for flu and RSV. I appreciate it. It kind of gives us a gauge as to where we are and broadens so we're not just looking as in two years ago at the green map of New Jersey as if flu flittered away like magic because we all know it didn't. Next, Sussex County Office of Mosquito Control Superintendent Paige Lockburner was approved by the New Jersey Department of Environmental Protection to be a certified pesticide trainer for basic pesticide training. So Paige is now certified to train employees on the basic training required to apply for pesticide license through NJDEP. She's kind of turning into the mosquito celebrity from up here. She's very sought after. Costs previously dedicated by the Office of Mosquito Control for this training will be eliminated since this course that's required now can be delivered in-house. So the Office of Roads and Division of Facilities Management may also obtain a pesticides license now. So that's good news. So that's my report for this evening. However, what I would like to say, instead of waiting for new business, because it's not really new business, we knew Commissioner Director Fasano would be leaving, but first of all, friend to friend, this is breaking my heart, but understanding from a professional standpoint, you know, you have different things that you may wish to move on to. I appreciate absolutely everything you have ever done for us here at the county, everything you've done personally for me. You were wonderful. You were a wonderful help to myself and Josh Hertzberg when we were running to come on the board, and then to have you join us on the board was absolutely amazing. And your efforts, and I know Chris is going to comment on this tonight, but your efforts specifically with American Rescue Plan funding and priorities and your participation in that process was great. You brought new ideas. You brought fresh ideas, and we are going to miss you. We are absolutely going to miss you, so I wish you well. Hope PACON's getting a winner back.
Thank you. Thank you, Commissioner. Thank you. Mr. Yardley?
Well, it was a real interesting week. I'm going to talk about the week, walking outside and getting frozen. Couple lessons to be learned is to make sure you are well bundled. With your family up from Florida, you'll find not only do they have one jacket on, but you try to put two on. It was amazing that if you loan them the car, you get in the car and you're driving along, and it's like in a Sonic because the heat is at max, period. And if you have a car with battery start and you forget your car keys in the car, that battery is not going to open up or start that car. So it was an interesting week. I, like many people up here, suffered trying to get the heat to stay up. And living up here, I think it's close to 40 or 37. I've never experienced that. I mean, we've had a lot of problems over the years, but I couldn't believe that it was so cold at that furnace and just relatively, just couldn't quite get it and stay there. We survived, like many other people. And you really have to, makes you think about all of those people that don't have the services, don't have oil, and don't have the ability to heat their houses. And that's kind of sad in a country here that we can't always get and help people. That's what we need to do. I just wanted to mention that. I hope everybody had a great Christmas. I hope everybody has a great New Year, and we'll see everybody in January. Hopefully, Anthony, you're going to stop by and wave and say how you're doing. But I'll talk more starting January. Thank you.
Thank you, Herb. Deputy Director Carney?
Thank you, Director. I don't have anything to report for planning or any engineering at this time. I'm going to keep my comments directed to you for new business. Again, Merry Christmas to everybody, Happy New Year. I'll leave it at that for now.
Well, thank you. Very short report.
I'm trying to have you beat my record, Director.
Thank you.
For your last meeting.
I appreciate that. Thank you to all who are joining us this evening. I hope you all are enjoying the holiday season. I will keep my report brief tonight, but first, I am very pleased to formally, informally announce that Sussex County Small Business Grant Program is now up and live, and it can be found at sussexcounty sbg.com. That's sussexcounty sbg.com, and that is where our businesses can find our portal to apply. The Sussex County Board of County Commissioners has dedicated $2 million of its allocated American Rescue Plan Act funding to support our community's small businesses and nonprofit organizations as they struggle to meet the challenges posed by a persistent pandemic and the unpredictable fluctuations in our national and local economies that we all have seen lately. Small businesses and nonprofit organizations remain the economic backbone of our community. Sussex County is providing this opportunity for direct financial assistance to ensure their survival, their recovery, and their ultimate success. Through the Sussex County Small Business Grant Program, financial support up to $15,000 is to be provided to qualifying businesses, business owners, and nonprofits. Eligibility and program guidelines can be found right on our website, which is again sussexcounty sbg.com. This is a really unique program, the first really of its kind here in Sussex County, and I understand that we've already had a handful of businesses apply for this assistance, which is great. I fully anticipate this funding to generate a really strong return on investment for Sussex County as its future in directing into our local small businesses. At this juncture, I believe it's firmly the best thing we can be doing for our local economy. And finally, this is my final meeting here on the Commissioner Board. I absolutely need to take a moment to thank my fellow commissioners for your trust in me and your willingness to work with me throughout my years here, our county staff for your unwavering commitment to Sussex County, and the people who call it home, and for always in my experiences going above and beyond, countless municipal business and nonprofit leaders for their work with us, and of course, the people of Sussex County for trusting me in this position. It has been an absolute honor to be a county commissioner here, and I am extremely confident in Sussex County's future, and most importantly, its people. So thank you. May God bless you, and may God bless Sussex County. And that will conclude my report for this evening because we do have business to take care of. We do not have a consent agenda, thankfully, but we do have the approval of our minutes. So do I have a motion to accept the approval of our minutes this evening?
Still move.
Commissioner Carney moves. Is there a second?
Second.
Commissioner Fantasia seconds. Any discussion? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Standing? Motion carries. Item 12, we have no appointments or resignations this evening. Item 13 is our resolutions portion. That runs from items 13A to I. Do I have a motion to adopt resolutions 13A to I?
Still move.
Commissioner Carney moves. Is there a second?
Second.
Commissioner Yardley seconds. Any discussion? Christina, can you please call the roll?
Deputy Director Carney?
Yes.
Commissioner Fantasia?
Yes.
Director Fasano?
Yes.
Commissioner Yardley?
Yes.
Item carries. Item 14 is our awards of contract change orders and bids. The Board of County Commissioners of the County of Sussex has reviewed the award of contract change orders and bids consisting of various proposed resolutions and determined that adoption of said resolutions is in and will further be public interest. Is there a motion to adopt resolutions A through U?
Still move.
Commissioner Carney moves. Is there a second?
Second.
Commissioner Yardley seconds. Any discussion?
I have a question on, with the seven coming on, how many get, how many of the old buses get retired? Can you recall?
No, I don't. It's a lot of them. And it's one for one replacement on most of them.
Yeah. Remember, they're about 20, 25 years old. These, these, through acid, I should have just come to the office, but I'm assuming these are more rust-resistant, these buses, or, because I see the buses and I wonder how they're staying together.
Well, I think that's just an upgrade that you have to have, Herb. I know a lot of trucks will come with that if you pay extra to get the undercarriage sprayed, if you're looking for underneath, I don't know if you're looking on the body itself, but I know that is a big upgrade because I know when we had our budget meeting, we spoke about that stuff.
And, yes, I was just wondering if there's a, you know, if there is any way to do something so we don't run into the problem, unless we're able to buy.
We do have an idea, and that comes from Director Fasano with our fleet wash, whether it happens at school or we buy one. That'll solve a lot of those problems, a lot. I think it would actually be more beneficial to do that fleet wash than pay all that extra money, and I believe we did discuss that. We did. The upgrade to get that done didn't equate to getting the fleet wash, and it could benefit a lot more.
And typically, buses are not of industrial quality like you see in our trucks. They're not built, the sides are thinner, that type of thing, so anything that you can do to preventively maintenance those before is very beneficial to those types of vehicles.
Thank you, Herb. We have a motion, we have a second, any other discussion for resolutions A through U? Hearing none. Christina, can you please call the roll?
Deputy Director Carney?
Yes.
Commissioner Fantasia?
Yes.
Director Fasano?
Yes.
Commissioner Yardley?
Yes.
Item carries. Item 15 is our financial portion of our agenda. Do we have a motion to approve items 15A through G?
Still move.
Commissioner Carney moves. Is there a second?
Second.
Fantasia seconds. Any discussion? Hearing none. Christina, can you please call the roll?
Deputy Director Carney?
Yes.
Commissioner Fantasia?
Yes.
Director Fasano?
Yes.
Commissioner Yardley?
Yes.
Item 16, we have no personnel agenda this evening. Item 17, our administrative report, anything from you, Mr. Tapp?
Just real brief, happy holidays to everyone, Happy New Year. It's been a pleasure so far, all of five months, so, and I actually do like working here, so it's all good. No, and it's been a pleasure with you, Director, particularly as it related to the opera money and going to the small business. That's, that's just a, that makes jobs interesting to come to, you know, after all the things we deal with on a daily basis. The one time in 20 years I've been in county government, we actually get to, I don't want to call it free money, but you give money to the agencies that desperately need it and went through pain, and it's not an impact to the taxpayers. That is, that is a, that's a real cool thing to be involved with. So I look forward to next year if you continue working. Thank you to all of you for your support, and Happy New Year.
Thank you, Commissioner Tapp. County Council report, anything from you, Mr. Steinhardt?
No, sir, nothing. Thank you very much. Wish everybody Happy New Year. Obviously, thank you for the, you know, allowing me to be your county council and sort of factor, wish you well in your future endeavors.
Thank you, Doug. Any unfinished business this evening, item 19? Item 20, any new business this evening?
Yes, before Commissioner Carney says his piece, I just would like to congratulate our county council, now Senator Steinhardt, who has now joined the New Jersey Senate, one of 40, he's representing our neighbors in District 23, and we're proud of him.
Absolutely.
Yes, we are.
Thank you, Don. Any other new business?
I have some new business, so basically, these are my comments to you, Director. As Deputy Director, it has been my privilege to work beside you. You bring a lot to the table with your ideas, your comprehension, your willingness to compromise to get things done, and your great understanding of county government. For the past two years, we have spoken consistently and made sure the things the board wanted got done and got done in a timely manner to better the county. Your input on matters have weighed heavily when making decisions. Your spearheading of small business grants with upper funds, along with your fleet wash idea, was and is instrumental to our local economy. In your absence, the board and myself will do everything we can to get these things done. During the time we have spent together on this board, I've seen both of us learn from each other. There have been many times you've told me, let's speak to council before we proceed. Then, there was one time you told me I couldn't interrupt you at a meeting. At that time, I wasn't happy with that comment, then proceeded to laugh underneath my breath because I would have said the same thing. When you have the passion like we do, the point needs to get across, and it needs to get across then and there. I end my comments with this: I am proud to call you a colleague, but I am prouder to call you a friend. The only good thing that is coming out of you leaving is that I am now the youngest county commissioner. So I thank you for that. But all kidding aside, I will not be surprised if one day again you are up here at this dais, leading this county. So good luck on your next venture. I am sure it will be a successful one. Thank you for everything, Don.
Thank you very much, Deputy Director Carney. Really appreciate that. Okay, any other new business today? Hearing none, we'll move to our second public session from the floor. This public session is for those wishing to make general comments of three minutes or less regarding non-agenda topics. Please line up at the microphone and maintain a six-feet social distance with other attendees, state your name and municipality for the record. Is there a motion to open the floor for public comment, our second public comment this evening?
Still move.
Commissioner Carney moves. Commissioner Fantasia seconds. Any discussion? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Standing? Motion carries, and the floor is now open for our second public comment this evening. Is there anyone who wishes to be heard?
Three minutes?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Good evening, Commissioners. My name is Jack DeGroot. I'm a farmer from Wantage and grad student. I come to you today to present an address, an issue that has not been solved in the past couple of years. The issue is with the intersection in Wantage of Route 15, oh, sorry, Route 519 and Libertyville Road, or as, also known as Route 519 and Decker Town Turnpike. To give you reference, the intersection has two stop signs, one located at the beginning of Libertyville Road and one located at the end of Decker Town Turnpike, vice versa, whichever way you drive. Then, however, we have Route 15, no stop signs, straight as an arrow, where drivers love to speed and do reckless driving. My family farm is located at this intersection, and on the family farm, I run a produce stand, so I've, and that's on the farm, obviously, and I see, have a crystal-clear view of all the drivers that go up and down the road speeding, all the drivers who do not stop at the Decker Town and Libertyville stop signs. Over the past three years, I've seen an outrageous number of drivers performing reckless driving and has lead to serious consequences for my family, friends, and Sussex County members. For example, on July 15th, my high school friend Jackie Harnett was involved in a head-on collision that I witnessed at my produce stand at the Wantage intersection. Luckily for her, there was no serious consequences. However, that's not always the case. This leads me to June 13th at 1:30 in the morning. His name was Jonathan Fett. He was 18 years old, had his whole life in front of him. He was my brother's friend at Sussex County Technical High School, and he was beloved by many in Wantage and Sussex County. I remember that night or morning of the accident. I remember waking up with my family to the noise of metal crashing onto metal. I remember going outside, seeing the crash site, and then I remember seeing the number of cop cars arriving to the scene. What I remember most, oh, it's time?
One minute, I'm sorry.
Oh, sorry, sorry. All right. What I remember most about that night was the screams and cries of Jonathan's mother, who arrived an hour or so after the scene to find out that her beloved son was killed. I think we could all agree that one life taken away from us is one life too many. I do not know if you guys can help. I'm not the Department of Transportation, I'm just a farmer and graduate student, but upon graduation in May, I'm making it a commitment to myself in making sure that Sussex County is safe and a caring community, and that's why I'm here now, to start a little bit early. So I don't, and.
That's okay. Time. We'll end it.
Thank you so much.
Mr. DeGroot, thank you very much for bringing those concerns to us. I really appreciate that. I assure you that these concerns will be addressed and looked at here by our county. I don't know the specifics of what you're talking about, but we will find it and we will address it. I really appreciate you bringing this to us. Thank you.
Director, I have, I just have one question.
Yes.
So I grew up in Wantage, too, and I flew up Decker Town, Libertyville Road, because I used to work in Milford. I had me packing over there.
Yep, that's the only pathway.
Right. So there's stop signs going on.
Right. So there's stop signs going on 519, or was that?
Libertyville Road and Decker Town Turnpike.
Right. There's only, it's only a two-way right now, you're saying?
It's only a two-way, and obviously, there's possible solutions of a four-way stop. There's, if you look at Andover, there's Alamoche Road and Johnsonburg Bypass Road, and they created a four-way stop that was much, much safer.
And we did, too, just in Frankfurt and Lafayette. Last year, we did the same on Upper North Shore and Madison Reservoir, which turns into another road. So we have done that. It does take a while with studies. I do work with the engineering department. So again, there's something like Commissioner or Director said, we could look into. So we've done it in the past.
Yes.
It just, I know you don't want to have patients because I don't have any whatsoever, but it just takes a little time to look into that stuff.
Yes.
But as you said, we'll look into it for sure.
Yes. Thank you so much. Thank you for your time.
Absolutely. Are there any other public comments this evening? Hearing none, is there a motion to close the floor for public comment and return to regular business?
Still move.
Commissioner Fantasia moves. Is there a second?
Second.
Commissioner Yardley seconds. Any discussions? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, standing. Motion carries. Item 22 is our reminders. As always, please check the county's website at sussex nj.us for our latest updates and news. We have no executive session reading this evening, which brings me to our motion to adjourn this meeting.
Still move.
Commissioner Carney moves. Is there a second?
Second.
Commissioner Fantasia seconds. Any discussion? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, standing. Motion carries. Meeting is adjourned. Thank you, and have a wonderful New Year. Thank you.